Good evening. Welcome to the October 11th Bargersville Town Council Meeting. Everybody please rise for the Pledgeable Agents.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do a roll call, starting from my right.
Dustin Doyle.
Brittany Ann Moore.
Andrew Greenwood.
Susie Claus.
We have quorum. Council business, I'll start with Mr. Stone.
You all have a copy of our proposal to assist with the general accounting and financial matters. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. President, I move to accept the Stone Media Group contract as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Doyle, a second by Mrs. Claus. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero.
Very good. All right, we'll put together a management report for you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Don't go anywhere. Under ordinances for this evening, ordinance 2022-27, the town budget for fiscal year 2023. Mr. Stone, have at it.
Yeah, appreciate that. There's been no changes since the proposed initial night one. Want to thank the Sandra and the Clerk Treasurer staff for helping the, get the notice out to taxpayers, so tonight is the public hearing. It was noticed, this is one of the requirements as part of the budget adoption process. The next meeting, your next scheduled meeting, it would be, the budget would be up for adoption, and that would ultimately set the 2023 tax rates. Happy to answer any questions that you may have after reviewing the packets. Otherwise, we'll be here to answer any questions of the public.
Any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Well, open the public hearing at 7:15. If everyone from the public has a question. Has a question or comment, please come forward, state your name. No one is running up to the podium, so we will close the public meeting at 7:16.
Okay, very good. Any questions of council regarding the proposed budget? Okay, very good. Next meeting will be up for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you for all your work. We have an addition, ordinance 2022-29, being presented by Clerk Treasurer Nancy Kew.
Trevor at First Financial, we have had all the documents, but they sent this over, and they would like an ordinance with our vehicles, just to bring it all together. So, that is before you tonight. So, in actuality, each vehicle we order, purchased, will have an ordinance.
This is a part of our new, our new financing structure that we've implemented?
Yes, unless I can talk them down, and maybe when you order multiple, just list them individually.
Are there any questions from Clerk?
Mr. President, I move to reapprove ordinance number 2022-29 as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Doyle, a second by Mrs. Moore. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Thank you, Nancy. The presentation of the September 27th Town Council meeting minutes, did everyone have an opportunity to review them? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the September 27th, the seventh meeting minutes.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Claus, a second by Mrs. Moore. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero. Don't believe we have to vote on the budget reports. Has everyone had a chance to look at them? Or have any questions for the Clerk? Seeing none, we will move right along on our agenda. Mr. Carter, right, we are going to strike the presentation on Keppart Park. That needs to go to the Parks Board, so we will need to set a meeting and have those items go in front of the Parks Board, so. Next up, Mr. Seacoast, do you have anything?
I do have one report that Mr. Carter, I asked you to write.
Okay.
As you know, the Food Level Commission is RFP out for the properties near the intersection of 144 and 135. We have had some positive responses from three groups, 30 Cowlands, Barrett Stogley, and Unicorp, affirm they will be submitting proposals. We've also met with four other groups that are considering responding to that request.
Great.
Do you have any questions on that?
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Chief is not here. I don't believe we have anything from our police department, so we will move on. Hopefully, he's enjoying the sun. Mr. Killinger.
First item I have on the agenda is bid recommendation for Stones Crossing Transmission and Booster Station. At this time, I'm going to hand out the documents for this, and Jim McNulty with Strand is here to kind of update you on that project, and hopefully, we can have a recommendation tonight for a contract.
Good evening.
Hey. Got the bid letter in front of me. We received five bids last week for this project. This is the Whiteland Road, Honey Creek Road, a project we've been developing for some time. So, we received five bids. The low bid received was from ISI, who I think we've worked with before, and that bid was That is the base bid plus a couple of alternatives. We had a couple of alternatives to switch some casing from HCP to steel, and one was to switch some pipe type from HCP to TVCC 900, just to see what, what would be best. And actually, both of those end up in being deductive alternatives. So, so that led to that low bid price, and it actually was slightly below our last cost opinion, which is from end of April, actually, $5,411,000. So, it was slightly below our most recent cost opinion, which had escalated from, you know, over the years, but I think it's good, you know, a good set of bids, and a good number, and we would suggest proceeding with that bid, with that award. Governor's still working on some easements to go with that, and that to get those lined up. We've got a couple of, when we bid the project, we put some milestones in there, so we could try to get through these farm fields by the end of April, just to kind of make everybody happy and avoid crop damages. So, that got added in at the last minute, and no one seemed to object to that, but it depends on us getting going and getting them going, so they can get the materials and get out there and get construction started early next year, for sure. Any questions I can add, answer for you about that project? It's badly needed. I mean, it's going to supply water to that area, and then to the new Stones Crossing tank, which is under construction right now, so. There are a couple of complicated areas. We need to make sure you got a little bit of contingency in there in your budget to cover any, you know, any things that have changed as we finish up getting those easements, in case something were to have to shift a little bit. Otherwise, it's turned out pretty well for us, I think.
To clarify, this does not include the design, correct? This is just for the actual construction?
Just construction.
And then, this is probably more of a question for Kevin, but as we look back at our bonding and the bonds that we did, we're essentially $900,000 over what we expected this to be 18 months ago.
Yeah, so, yes, this one is over, and as you recall, our Stones Crossing Tower was over also by a few million. So, we're still covered with the bond funds. Other projects might need to be tabled until maybe the next bond series, but we have enough at this point between the bond funds and local funds to complete the project.
Any additional questions from Killinger? For Strand?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the bid contract to ISI in the amount not to exceed $5,488,62.50.
I'll second.
I have a bid by Mr., or excuse me, a motion by Mr. Doyle, and a second by Mrs. Claus. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Kevin, I would ask that in the next, let's say by the end of the year, if we could get with Strand and reassess our capital projects versus the bond funds that we took in, now that we've had a few of these go more than just a little bit over budget, and you, you know, to assess the projects that we want to push back, and what that looks like, so that we're all aware of that. If you could maybe work on that in the next 60 days, so that by the end of the year, we can all be on the same page. I would appreciate that.
During our 2023 budget process with Baker Tilly, we're also reviewing those capital projects. We have two more projects that are scheduled to go out for bid, so that'll give us an idea on wastewater, on how those funds are looking, so we'll be able to update the council.
That'd be great. Thank you.
The next item is getting a jumpstart on our 2023 projects for, consider proposal for well 7A Engineering Services. So, with replacing a well, you know, to get a jumpstart on that, we would like to engage with Strand and work on a test well for the site, because we need to determine the location of this new well. We did it, did this about two years ago with well 4A, which was delayed by materials and so forth, so it was delayed by a year, and we'd like to get a jumpstart on well 7A. So, we've budgeted a new well for '23 and '24, and we'd like to get a jump on 2023 with well 7A. So, you have a proposal in front of you for $120,000 to start that process, and we would make sure that this is, continues to be in the capital outlay budget for '23. Jim can maybe go over the process of how they facilitate installing a new well, and the process with IDIM and permitting.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a while, and it's sort of deteriorating, maybe a little quicker than what anybody would desire, but it's a process in that area. You've got DNR permitting, flood plan, and you've got IDIM permit, and it's even complicated. A little bit more, you've got all legalness out there. You have to be 660 feet back from that, and we have to, we have a construction, we cannot do it between December 20th and July 31st. So, want to make sure we get our calendar lined up, and get this out there for the right time to avoid that issue, and that's why it's probably, it'd be better to get going now, so you get permitting on done early next year, and then you just start doing the tiniest right for that. So, otherwise, say we could get this down a road a little bit further, but really, that's important to get going on. And we need to, do need to do a test hole everywhere we do this, so we're going to replace an existing well, we'll step off probably 40, 50, maybe 100 feet, depending on the setback we want to have from the river, and it's an older well, so we do want to do another test hole up front, so we know for sure what we're getting into, in case any changes need to be made for design, we'll base a design off of a test hole, if we have, have a range through somebody to do a filler to get that done at the outset of the project, and that is something that, Kevin, I'm getting accomplished. So, and up to you, of course, if you want to proceed with that, we will get that going before the end of the year.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal from Strand and Associates for well 7A for Design Services bidding and construction not to exceed $120,000. I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Claus, a second by Mrs. Moore. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four to zero. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, Trent Newport with Crossroad Engineers is going to come to the podium and update the council on projects.
Good evening. So, I'll start with Keppart Park. If you've driven by there, you've seen we've made some, some good progress, so you can kind of see where the grades are kind of ending up, or we're close to those, so we're close to the end of our dirt woes. And then, you'll probably see a little bit of work on the back end where they put the foundation down for the building. The schedule they've given us recently, of course, they've had very good weather, and we hope that continues, at least to not totally shut us down, but we've had good weather when we needed it. Now, we can start maybe doing some stuff that even if it rains, it shouldn't slow us down too much. So, you should start seeing, you know, some asphalt laying down for the, for the parking lot, pour the pad for the building. They can start getting it vertical, so that they could be working on the interior stuff this, this winter, and they're still saying that we're going to get some site concrete, you know, done here yet this year. So, their schedule is very aggressive. We are hearing a lot of concerns with some supplies on concrete materials specifically, so we'll see how that plays out, but I think if it, if it goes to what they're telling us, they're going to be ahead of schedule with not as much to do to finish up in the spring as what, as what we had thought. So, any questions on Keppart?
When will the path be connected?
When will the path be connected? I saw that they dug it out. I think that they're planning on doing it with the asphalt, but probably just binder, so it might be, I don't know if they'll allow, you know, I mean, people will use it, they'll probably have it barricaded off, but I don't think they would do.
I saw someone on the dirt today, so I'm sure they'll use it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's even better now than it was, right? As dry as it is, so.
But you.
They had originally shown that in the schedule in the spring.
Right, so that's in it.
But then, they started cutting grade for it, so I need to get an update on to see if they're planning to pave it with the parking lot or not. Not sure.
That'd be great.
Speaking of that, just a kind of recap on the path project, as you know, it's all kind of done. We're just looking at like, a lot of the seeding that we put down, we got no rain, so we're going to try to probably do some reseeding, and if you remember, when we did have one rain event, we had one little area pocket that needed to be fixed that had a pond, so we've got a quote to put an inlet in there. But with those items, I think we're still going to be about $30,000 under on that project at the end of the, the end of the contract, so that's good. And the water project that was in that area, it's done, except for a patch on Whiteland Road that's got to be finished up, but it, it came in at the end of the day about $12,000 under, so both of those were under. The alley project that's going on, it was slow moving, it's better now, but you know, now we have to double back and do the, the water main on it. There's still a meeting again tomorrow, but they were still projecting early in November to be complete, and I know we're right on the heels of when taxman needs some water. We actually have water now, so the sanitary being in is the critical thing, and it, it did get done, so I think we're over the hump there. We're projecting that project to be in, to come in a little bit under, with some savings that we had, about $40,000, $48,000, so.
We like this under.
Yeah. Kevin, can you take notes?
Yeah. Well, I decided to come with some good news, right?
Kevin, can you take notes?
Yeah. Well, I decided to come with some good news, right?
Yeah. Yeah, what's, yeah, what's the last thing?
Yeah, that's it. I'll wait for the park board meeting for Keppart.
Well, thank you.
Any questions, Ray?
No.
Thanks for all you're doing. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, agenda item D, does that need to go?
Yes.
Next item is Greg Ilko's here with Crossroad Engineers to discuss variation from an internal policy on water main install. I will turn the podium over to Greg.
Thank you very much. Greg Ilko with Crossroad Engineers, good evening all. So, we were the engineer of record for MI Homes for the development of Saddle Club South. Section 4 is currently under construction there, and then we went through the process, obviously, with MI again for Sawyer Walk. Throughout the construction of Saddle Club South, the, the internal policy of the water main being installed post curb being implemented, was questioned during that construction period by MI to, to the Utilities Department and Tim Brown, and it was identified that Bargersville's policy was to make sure that curb was in prior to water main installation. So, MI respected that, albeit, you know, tried to, tried to get it done, but they respected the, the policy and moved forward with a, with a cooperative nature. They are now under construction for Section 1 of Sawyer Walk. They're, they're doing that work right now, and the way the calendar is working now, there, there can be some significant time savings done, or realized, rather, with the installation of the water main pre-curb. And so, with me this evening is Mr. Matt Howard, Mr. Keith Lays of MI, to describe this specific situation, and, and I did have conversations with Kevin, because as, I could not find where this was an ordinance or a construction standard or anything. I wanted to make sure that this was a policy, and, and it is an internal policy. I asked Kevin to waive his Magic Utility Managers bond, but he didn't do that. He requested that we come to, to counsel, so we're, we're here this evening respectfully requesting this variance from that policy. Quick comparison, just of, of some big players that, that I would compare Bargersville to would be City of Carmel, and then Indianapolis, currently, you know, Citizens Energy Group. Neither of those utilities require curb to be placed prior to the installation of their water main facilities. That being said, more locally, Indiana American Water, they do have a policy. Actually, they've got in their standards that curb has to be placed, regardless of the jurisdiction that that water main is being placed in. If, if Indiana American Water main is being installed, the curb has to be in. So, that might be what, what Bargersville is trying to piggyback, but I did want to present at least a couple of examples of, like I said, City of Carmel and Citizens Energy Group, they, they don't have that policy. So, the, the policy and aside, as I said, Matt and Keith are here to discuss in details the Sawyer Walk situation, and, and how that, the, the waiver from that policy would, would, I think, benefit everybody.
Gregor, Kevin, can you give me the reason, or give us the reason why we have that policy? What, I mean, there's got to be a reason why we want the curbs in before the water mains go.
That was my question.
Yeah, me too. I was thinking that, too. Yeah. Actually, would like to invite Tim Brown.
That's what I thought we should ask him. You have to talk to my level, because I'm.
Okay. What it is, back when Joe Harrod was here, I mean, he's a long time gentleman, he started this, okay? Technically, it's in our, if you look at our detail on curb, or on the hydrants and stuff, it shows, but it shows six feet to the center of the pipe, okay? So, technically, it's in there, but the writing is not in it. What happened, we've changed the sender several times, and it got missed. I will take the hit for that, because I know that reads up firm and stuff like that. I'm not so glad it's that. But he put this in, and one reason is because we're running into, the main gets deep, we're running into the back of sidewalk, it's getting out here. Now, today, with everything going on, we got gas on both sides now. It makes it a safety hazard for our guys. Even if engineers put this in, I still have pictures here in subdivisions where my manholes are still getting buried with the curb and sidewalk. I have meter pits that's sinking in the ground. I've talked to Jeff Jones, which is the water supervisor, talked to Aaron, which is the meter supervisor, talked to Kevin Killinger about it, and myself. We're on them. We would like to leave it, and the reason is, it just makes it a better quality of pipe installation. We're not running heavy equipment over it. Okay, that's a big thing, because they got to backfill all these curbs once they get poured, so they're going to be running dozers and stuff over it. Cleanliness of the pipes is a big thing. Back in '08, we tried this, okay? There was a gentleman who was on council at that time. They made him acting superintendent, we was in a period of getting a new one. He let an area go and do this. By the time they were done in the final on the project, we had to have them install two vaults, make it a private system, because it did not meet our standard anyway. And it was laid out by engineers, offensive guys, but it was laid out by them. I've got pictures on my iPad that I can show you that we're raising manholes in the section we're talking about, where meter pits are low, I'm failing inspections, because if we're getting too deep, our guys can't recover.
Tim, how, how long does that issue arise generally, like, like you're saying that these manholes are low? Does that, you know, when they're bringing the heavy equipment over these things, does it arise right then, or can it go two years?
It goes to building, and as Matt's aware, me and Matt have told several times on this, what happens if a builder's building a house, even though it's, it's the builder, they're two different sectors. So, what they do, the builder don't want to haul dirt away, so what he does is come in and change the lot, and raise grade on the house, and then I start losing my stuff in the process. When I took over building inspectors, I have 58 manholes were repaired when I took it over. And that's the thing we're trying to tell them, and when I went to council and asked them, they said, yes, you do no inspections until all utilities are accessible, or a safety hazard for shutting off people, shutting off if the waterhouse is flooded, if my meter pit's buried up, we can't shut them off if they're flooding.
Right.
And like I said, I, to today, matter of fact, I went out on this morning, my meter's this far in the ground, clean. We don't touch meters anymore when we drive by, so as time, that builds grass over it, and we lose sight of them. So, that's our concern, and Jeff and I and Aaron and Kevin are all in with the same thing. We'd prefer to leave it in there, because it's just a better product for the town in the long run. All you have to do is have curbs. I get it, there with the timing and the weather and everything, but you can still pour concrete in winter. I've had them do it, they put concrete blankets over it. All we require is a concrete, the curbs to be in, you can still lay the water, it's just a better product for the town in the long run.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Let MI come out and say a few words.
Sure.
Keith Lays, MI Homes, how are you guys doing?
Good.
Yeah, we find ourselves in a situation, and I certainly sympathize with the things that kept, because things do happen during the course of construction. We do have performance bonds, and we do go back and fix when things do happen. We try not to let them happen, obviously. We find ourselves in a situation now, like everybody else, finding contractors, getting things done in a timely manner. We got a delay getting started, our earthwork contractor finally got done, and now we cannot get concrete structures. So, we are having about a month to a month and a half delay in getting our sanitary sorted. The whole reason for this is so that we can get our models started in June, July, so we can get open for sales this year. If we miss the opportunity to put in the water main over the winter, we won't have models open until December. We'll miss a whole year of sales and permitting, and I think everybody knows with the situation of the housing market, sales are getting harder and harder to do. And I think everybody knows with the situation in the housing market, sales are getting harder and harder to do. So, we're trying to make sure that we can get open on time and start building up the community. We have experience in doing water main. Our contractors have experience doing water main without having streets in. Typically, that's how I've done it my entire career. Putting them in, concrete curbs in the winter, yes, you can, but we still have to proof roll the streets and line the streets, which you can't do in the winter. It gets really tough. So, I appreciate, you know, what Tim's saying. It's true. You can do concrete in order. You just can't do the precursory stuff doing that. If there's something that we can do better or different from an as-builting standpoint to make sure that things get done so we accommodate the concerns of the utility part, we're more than willing to sit down and come up with some solutions. But this month delay ends up being two months to three months if we have to wait till April to start watering. And that really, we miss a whole year.
And Matt Howard with MI Homes, just to add on what Keith was saying. Basically, what we gain by being able to put the water mains in prior to curb, in the normal situation where we wait until after curb to put the water main in, then we've, you know, got that month to put the water main in before we can get a recon with the power company, the gas company, where it delays that. Whereas if we can do it in the winter months when we can't do anything else, such as street activities, line, whatever, basically, we pick up that month. So, that's why we're saying a month, we lose a month and then it just kind of drops out for dry utilities. And unfortunately, we typically allot like three months for dry utilities, which is gas and power because sometimes they're ready to go and sometimes it's months out.
We're not trying to make anybody's job harder. We're just trying to see if we can come up with a solution to a situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, I know I got a lot of passion for the utilities because it's something that stays with us forever. So, I did forget a few points I'd like to point out. One thing is, we don't let them do any testing till all the dry utilities in. So, regardless if you put it in now, you're still gonna wait till all the dry utilities are powering gas. So, you're still gonna wait. Power and gas won't do it without the curb. So, that's a big issue of us because we got them tracking it over. We can't tell somebody about something until we do a pressure test. And the thing about it is just trying to do what's best for the town and make sure that we get a good product. Because Brownsburg doesn't let you do it, like, say, American Water doesn't let you do it. And I understand wanting to get it in there, but it's, we're taking a big liability. And I agree that, you know, it can be done. But the point is, is what if we got 100 feet, what's deep? And then, well, we'll let that go. Well, what if the next guy says, I only got 150 foot deep. Where's my cutoff point to stop this and say, no, we dig it up? And then we're opening door for every developer to come here and ask for a waiver. So, now I've got mains being put in all over the place without.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it sets a precedence.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak from personal experience. I can feel their pain. So, I'm conflicted on this because there's a lot of supply chain issues and other things going on that have never been dealt with in previous times. I mean, getting concrete alone this past week just turned into an absolute nightmare. You know, everybody's restricted now. And it's a new realm. I don't know that I've ever seen anything like this. And I've not been doing it that long, but over 20 something years. And so, I understand what they're saying. I don't know that, I'm interested in changing the policy. What I would ask is, is there something that could be done? Is there a bond big enough that could be placed? Is there a dollar amount of indemnity that could be done that would allow somebody to come in and do this? And we'd say, Tim goes out there, you did this wrong. Guess what? We're calling your bond or we're doing that. Is there a way to allow? Because I believe we are in extreme times right now and I think we want to be a good partner with good developers and good home builders and good construction folks, period. But we also need to protect our system. So, I mean, and I'm right there with you. So, I don't think I'm interested in, personally, I don't think I'm proposing that we change the policy. But is there a compromise that allows somebody in this time to say, hey, how could we make this right and make it work?
And see, that's what my question was. These issues, does it happen in the first month? Or does it in two years' time, something that's happened?
No, what you're really talking about is the different utilities have different policies and they want you to have certain things in so that they know they're done. And Tim's saying, hey, I want this done because then I know it's done. And you're not bringing these kind of, these other peoples aren't gonna, these other groups aren't gonna come in and screw up the water main, right? And the meter and everything else that he needs to have in there. And it's the same thing. Like you said, the dry utilities, gas won't come until you've got your curbs in and you backfilled, right? So, it's not, this is not an abnormal policy that we have. There are some municipalities that don't require it, but in Carmel and in Indianapolis, all of the other utilities do require you to do it. So, it's, the water doesn't require it, but everybody else does.
Everybody, yeah.
So, there's a pinch point always there. And so, the question is, is do we want to think about or entertain a way to allow someone to do that? What does that look like? You know, is there a bond big enough that they could put up where you go, fine?
There's a way out. They could make this private and just put in a vault and then they can do the water line when they want. And then I only take care of the vault. I take care of the vault out there. And then you guys.
Right. So, one option is, so one option is private.
And the thing about it is, like I said, we had engineers stake it with curbs and we're still getting buried manholes and still getting valve boxes. And that's what my concern is, just making sure we do what's right for both sides. But we are giving and taking with the contractors now. We used to not let them hand mix concrete and now we are because of concrete. We all got the letter stating that we're getting restricted on how much concrete we can get. So, we are letting them do it. We have introduced some new fittings into our system, which is Ford and McDonald's. We used to not do that before. So, we are working towards that to get there with Jeff and Aaron and Kevin. We're all dealing with different material now because it is a unique ton. And that's my concern.
Yeah, go ahead.
To your point on some assurances that MI would be able to provide, you mentioned even the bond. The water main is bonded now currently. There is a bond posted, performance guarantee on file with, for the installation of the water main. So, the water main's bonded. So, at any point in time, if Tim doesn't like what's installed and there's an issue with that, either A, MI fixes it or the contractor fixes it, or B, the bond could be called. So, that option is there currently. One thing that we could do that's typically after the fact is a kind of an intermediate as-built. Obviously, the, all the fittings and things need to be marked with posts as those go in. That water main could be as-built at that time. And then as the curb gets strung line or whatever, that would be a way to double check to assure that where that main is, is in accurate proximity to the design plans and the back curb. Certainly understand that when it comes to the home building part of it, which is post-everything anyway, there's issues you guys are gonna run into that, the dirt grading that Tim mentioned from the house pad itself, covering some of the meter pits and all that kind of stuff. That's after the fact, anyway. What we're looking for is just that policy of installing that main and getting that infrastructure in. And again, you know, having that bond in place currently and possibly doing an intermediate as-built to where that can even be reestablished with the string line is an option as well.
So, did I hear Keith say the reason why you wanted to do this is because you need spec homes for that section?
We need to start a model home.
Your model home, okay. So, can you start your model home in the other section?
This is our first section.
At the end, yeah, I know, but.
So, our model is in our first section up front off of Sawyer entrance. We did, we did think about building some spec homes off of Saddle Club. But we had, we still have the same issue. We've got, we've got to get the undergrounds and the water main in, even get back there. And it really doesn't, it's not the presentation we would want. I don't think it's the presentation the town would want either.
Okay.
We really want to put your best foot forward up front and make that front entrance.
Okay.
Showing. So, I think that's, you know, Tim, I think, you know, as far as house line, earthwork, I'm with you 100%, buddy. We fight it all the time and I can make some internal, you know, we've been, Matt and I have been fighting because every time you call, he gets the call, we got to come somewhere, come out, buddy. We fight it all the time and I can make some internal, you know, we've been, Matt and I have been fighting because every time you call, he gets the call, we got to come somewhere, come out, dig up the manhole or dig up the. So, we've been making end roads and policies on our side internally to control house line. And we'll continue to do that. I feel your pain. Some of it, some of it was just put in. I mean, when you go out and you adjust a manhole that much, we know the homeowners didn't do that that much. And we know they didn't like that much dirt, so. I mean, I just kind of, I know I'm the one who's responsible for the water line. I'm the one who takes care of it. I'm the one who has to sign off on it to be it and I want to just make sure it's right. It's their ultimate decision. I've always told everybody. I just follow what I'm put to say. I just love it. Says we gotta do this. We got a subdivision in the wild and right now it did it without the curbs. It's 11 feet deep. So, I mean, the thing about it is we've really got to watch it on our end for OSHA and all the others. But like I said, I understand our times are going on right now. I do get that. I'm willing to work.
You know, I want to clarify, when I'm talking about additional indemnification, I'm talking over and beyond what would normally be done in a special situation like this. So, the existing bond, to me, that's the baseline. If you're asking me, hey, I want to come in and I need to do this and it's gonna vary from the policy, you've got to go over and above that is what I, that's what I'm saying. Is there something over and above just the standard that would be acceptable, obviously, to you and also to our department? And the answer could very easily be no. But I'm just, I'm trying to throw that out there. So, I mean, what I would ask is, you know, I don't know that, I mean, I guess we can take this to a vote if we want to tonight or maybe we want to allow you to spend some more time with Tim and Kevin to see if there are some alternatives that could be worked out.
With what you're saying is, could you, for, in two weeks, come back to us at our October day meeting? Talk with David. Is there a way to, you know, we can put a variance in that says, yes, it's varied with the understanding that Tim, when it's done, can say, this has to be fixed and that's on your dime?
Yeah, I think one of the things I can correct you on a little bit is instead of waiting to the end of the project to do as-built, if we as-built it along the way, you know, so we add every fitting and every 50 feet or every 100 feet along the main because we can figure out what those elevations should be and what those manholes should be. And we make sure that they're adjusted. That way, we know they're accurate, right?
Yes.
And I think that may be because right now, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, those as-bills come long after. And nobody's checking. But if we check them sooner, I think that's good for everybody because our contractors are on site. If it's not right, they can adjust it. Home building, then, you know, I grade for the manhole. Don't bury that thing.
Grate it. I get you, but you know where I'm coming from.
And then I agree with you. There's preparations, but we also have to watch, where's my cutoff point? I would need some direction from council. Is the cutoff point three inches too deep? Six inches too deep or foot too deep? I have to have guidance on that or how far to the curb are we allowed to be with it? Because it would be hard for me to pick a standard for something like that without guidance from you guys and without guidance from Kevin because there's gotta be a cutoff point for me that we know that this is where we cut it off.
Yeah, I think, Tim, from, I think what Dustin and I are saying is, you guys, MI and David, get in a room, come up with an alternative that you're willing to accept. And the answer might be, there's not. And they might say, well, this is what we're proposing and then bring it back to us. And either you guys are in agreement in two weeks or you're not, but it comes back to us and then we go from there. Because I think as you, if you bring it to us tonight and we have to vote, I think it's gonna be a no. And based on just asking us to change the policy, based on the fact that Carmel and Marion County don't allow you to do that, I think we're gonna tell you, no. I think an alternative needs to be vetted out. And I'm hopeful that five smart, six smart people, even David, can get there.
I appreciate that. I think that's a good way to go and we'll sit down and work it out.
Sound good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Adam Stone's gonna come up and we're gonna talk about tree mow, maybe?
I think we will.
We're gonna make a motion.
We're gonna make a motion.
Yeah, we're gonna make a motion on that.
I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to give David, Kevin and Adam the ability to investigate the possibility to pay off this loan.
A second?
No motion by Mr. Doyle. We have a second by Mrs. Quals. Seeing no questions or comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, four to zero.
We saved time on that topic.
I knew it.
Do have an item I would like to add to the agenda. As you know, vehicle purchases have been difficult for us. We have taken that back over and we've had two vehicles potentially have come up for purchase that I would like council to consider tonight. So, these vehicles were originally approved through the previous vendor and we sever our relationship with them. And now we'd like to run these through. We just got a phone call this week that one has come in and we may have another one on Friday. So, pass out attachments here. Is this gonna be a purchase of it or?
Do we need an ordinance or?
Yeah, based off, I didn't catch everything that Kirk mentioned today.
We don't need an ordinance, Nancy, if we buy it, correct? Because we just need an ordinance from the bank. Yeah, because if we pay in cash, we don't have to have an ordinance.
Are you gonna pay this in cash?
I don't think.
No, I don't think he is.
I think.
So, I think we would have to authorize.
Yeah.
If we want and if we approve, we would authorize Kevin and the clerk to work towards finalizing this transaction. And then Nancy would need to bring us back an ordinance. With, from the bank, from the bank, author, or finalizing the dollar amounts in the schedule.
And what's this vehicle gonna be used for?
So, these two vehicles are identical. One would be for the utility department and one is for the development department.
Well, that's the town side.
One is the town side, yes.
I think.
Since they're duplicate vehicles and I, the utility vehicle came up first. So, I was working on the homework for that. And they said, hey, this Friday, we may have a second one. So, I volunteered to bring that, yes, for the development department. We may not have it. They may call us Friday and say, sorry, we only have one and this is strictly a utility matter. But I wanted to give you both options for consideration to buy one or buy two.
Aren't they in the budget for this year?
For both, both the town. Are we getting rid of any vehicles if we are able to purchase?
I believe we're transferring the Jeep.
To utilities.
To utilities.
Is the Jeep currently utilities, though? So, are you buying it from the town?
So, most likely, the Jeep was purchased under split transaction cost share. So, I've probably purchased it once already.
Okay.
Or maybe part of it.
I just need to follow the trail.
I thought it might be rude for me to voice from back to back.
It helps for the video.
Yeah. Yeah, the Jeep's currently in the development department. Kevin would like that for utilities, but I'm a problem transferring that out. Original plan was to trade that for the new vehicle, this new vehicle, which is a nice new vehicle. I don't have any permits and utilities to make use of it. I'm sure we can figure out an agreement.
We want split hairs with it and if it was truly a cost share, then the town would pay 12% of that vehicle. But we didn't look in that because it would have been a four-way split.
I think we just need to be cautious moving forward as to moving back and forth. And I don't know, we need to be very cautious.
And for next year, I mean, yeah, they're available and they're in the budget, then give it, Nancy, have it. have the ordinance ready, and then we can vote on it.
Do we need to authorize them to move forward? By consensus? Consensus? There you go. Thank you. Any other items?
That is it.
Thank you. I don't believe that wraps up me. Any announcements or events that anyone wants to mention? I don't know.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Doyle. Second, have I missed some more? Thank you.